Committee of the whole will now come to order, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, right, this is the committee of the whole, this is February twenty seventh, twenty seventeen. We're at six people long. I have Counselor Capone.
Present.
I have Counselor Semenelli. I have Counselor McKinnon. I have Counselor DeFlorio. I have Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
I have Counselor Delasola.
Here.
I have Counselor Hillen. I have Counselor Sani.
Here.
I have Counselor DePaulitan.
Here.
I have Counselor Matuski. I have Counselor DePiero.
Here.
April is President.
Will the audience please join us in saluting the flag?
All right, the piece of business, this is a zoning ordinance up by Counselor John Hillen as President, that according to provisions of Section twelve of the zoning ordinance of the city of Everett, the city council hereby adding a new section thirty-two by adding the following language. Section thirty-two, inclusionary zoning.
Mr. Chairman, could we have the administration come up and explain?
Is there anyone else you guys would like to join you in the presentation?
Also, good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. Also joining us is Attorney David Waterfall from KMP Law, who's in the audience to answer any questions, any legal questions, and also Courtney Starling from Community Opportunities Group, our housing consultant as well, with myself, Tony Sousa, Director of Planning and Development.
Good evening, Councilors, Catherine Rollins, Director of Policy.
Okay. Do you have a question, Counselor deFlorio? I was gonna let them give the presentation first.
Yeah, I would like to see the presentation explain what the section thirty-two is for the viewing audience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Once again, good evening. I just wanted to take a very brief moment on behalf of Mayor Di Maria. He's spoken at length, as have many of you, about the importance of creating additional affordable housing in the city of Everett. You all know, I think you see it in pretty much every neighborhood across the city, housing values are rising. That's great for owners, but it does oftentimes present something of a challenge for many of our residents who are renters. We know that about seventy-five percent of folks in the city of Everett do rent. So this is the majority of our population here. It's disproportionately high in terms of number of renters compared to homeowners, even for the region. So certainly, we have a challenge that's coming very quickly with the rest of the development and the great things happening in our city. I believe you've also had conversations with Mayor Di Maria about the importance of creating and preserving more affordable housing specifically for our seniors. We hear all the time from folks that they grew up here, they worked here, they're retired here, they love it here, they don't want to leave, their kids have moved north to the suburbs, they want them to leave the city. Our elderly folks just love the city and they don't want to leave, and we certainly don't want them to leave. But we're certainly sensitive to the fact that they need some affordable housing options, much like the rest of our population. So the mayor has spoken a lot about the necessity of us really trying to take some urgent action to make sure our seniors can stay, and also to make sure that our very diverse community members can stay. The folks that we think about when we talk about folks who might need affordable housing, they're not necessarily low income. I just want to put that out there because sometimes that's a misconception when folks talk about affordable housing. What we're targeting in terms of our inclusionary zoning ordinance goes above a hundred percent of the median income. So you could be making the average salary in Everett and qualify to live in this affordable housing that would be created. So really, these are your neighbors, these are your family members, these are your everyday folks who are working, who have a steady, solid income, who we would like to make sure can live in this community to ensure that it's diverse and it maintains the great cohesiveness and traditions it's always had. So the mayor sees this as really one tool in a toolkit. It's certainly necessary. We see a lot of urgency because we're seeing changes more dramatic and more quickly than I think just about any other community. And again, we think these are great, we just need to make sure that we're adopting a responsible policy toolkit to meet the needs of our residents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tony Sousa to talk about the specifics of the ordinance.
Thank you. And again, once again, good evening. And certainly as the, is this, certainly as the council may recall, when we created our housing production plan a few years back, one of the key recommendations was the adoption of the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And as Catherine articulated, the inclusionary zoning ordinance is one tool in a toolkit to help increase the number of affordable units we have here in the city. Currently, under our subsidized housing inventory, well, we take a step back, under Chapter forty B of the Mass General Laws, communities are required to have ten percent affordable units of its total number of units. And of the ten percent, currently, the city of Everett is at about six point five percent. And the adoption of inclusionary zoning is an important mechanism over time to get to that ten percent threshold. The potential benefits of adopting inclusionary zoning, and we have provided this handout, this multicolored handout, and some things to highlight in there in terms of potential benefits is, one of the highlights in the upper right-hand corner in blue is to meet the ten percent forty B mandate, currently at six point five percent, and absorb increases from new construction. Second, provide housing to serve existing low, moderate income residents. As Catherine made mention, one of the most interesting things with respect to income and salaries within our community is when you link that to the federal guidelines, federal requirements of the housing and urban development program, we find that existing low-income households here in Everett, up to almost seventy percent of renters and almost forty percent of owners would qualify under the existing guidelines. So therefore, the inclusionary zoning is an important mechanism for housing affordability for all types of individuals, and also creating more stock, of course, within our housing developments. Third, reduce economic and racial segregation by increasing housing opportunities and including shift the burden of creating affordable housing from the city to private sector. One of the surges that we've seen, as Catherine mentioned, is the increase of our apartments, market rate apartments. And as that increases, it's a scale here, that ten percent threshold is actually a moving target. So the more and more units that get added under market rate, your ten percent, if you don't keep up with it, keeps on dwindling over time. The inclusionary zoning itself went before the city, sorry, the planning board last fall. And in the handouts that you've received this evening, they are actually the same handouts that you received, I believe was back in, I checked my dates here, back on December sixth, twenty sixteen. There have been no changes to that. If I may, Mr. President, I'd like to go through the memo that I have provided dated January twenty-third, twenty seventeen. That is a memo connected to the planning board report that was released, sent over to you back in December of twenty sixteen. And likewise, you have this packet here, this handout that is stapled, I think it's the only handout that's stapled, it's the actual draft version of the inclusionary zoning. Mistitled, it's section thirty-one, certainly should be noted that this would be section thirty-two of the Everett zoning ordinance. So with reference to the memo as prepared on January twenty-third, twenty seventeen, and I'm reading here, respectfully requesting that the following changes be included should the council wish to adopt this new ordinance. The changes include planning board and planning staff recommendations. There are multiple sections in the inclusionary zoning ordinance. There's a total of one, two, three, four, five pages. And there are a total of eight or so recommendations that I'm offering to you should the board wish to approve. These recommendations, once again, come from the planning board and also from planning staff. And as I go through each one of these here, I've highlighted exactly whether it's planning board recommendation or department staff, or if it's planning board recommendation and department staff. So recommendation number one is to increase the threshold from six units to ten units. What does that mean? Well, in this case, inclusionary zoning, and that is the production of affordable units, for a developer, if you are going to produce ten units or more, ten percent of those units, in this case, ten units, one unit must be deemed affordable. That was a recommendation coming from the planning board. Number two, also under section two of this draft, is to strike out part B and part C. Part B and part C of section two pertain to subdivisions and assisted living units. Striking out part B and part C, the planning board found that its impact would be somewhat limited, whereas the number of subdivision, true subdivision units are far and few. Most impactful would be what is being retained, which is subsection A. And again, with further recommendation that instead of it being six, that it would be left at ten units. Recommendation number three, the planning board recommended, and originally when this was drafted by staff, recommendation was to create a certain mechanism with a certain threshold beyond just ten percent. Whereas if a developer were to build fifty units or more in certain districts, then that ten percent threshold would change to twenty percent. The preference of the planning board is to take more conservative approach and to keep the requirement at ten percent. Recommendation number four is to retain the density bonus so developers can increase the density of the project site, provided that additional units, additional affordable units are provided. And this is subject to planning board approval. This is a planning board staff recommendation. And in short, again, if a developer is willing to create even more units beyond the ten percent, the density bonus would provide that mechanism. For example, it could be a relief on parking, it could be and/or building height, for example. That review, that analysis, that approval would be done through staff, planning staff, and the planning board. But it's an important mechanism that we find in other ordinances relative to inclusionary zoning, and certainly in other planning ordinances as well. The density bonus gives some flexibility, and it helps the developer certainly balance some of the economics of these larger-scale projects. In the same token, it allows the community to, it gives the community an opportunity to increase the number of affordable units. Number five is to remove section seven. And section seven pertains to affordable housing fee. With respect to, and even this document itself, one additional amendment I would make to this, to recommendation number five, and we've deliberated over this internally. And section seven pertains to the calculation of affordable housing fee. Whereas, and I'm reading here, the planning board may permit the applicant to pay an affordable housing fee to be deposited in the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund in lieu of constructing affordable units. The affordable housing fee will be determined as a per-unit cost as calculated from regional construction and sales reports. The planning board will make the final determination of acceptable value. Subsection B says timing of affordable housing fee payments. Payments of the affordable housing fee shall be made according to the schedule set forth in section five point three and above. In subsection C, it says creation of affordable units. The affordable housing fee payments shall be used only for purposes of providing affordable housing as for low, moderate income households. The only revision that I would make in this memo that I probably back in January, and as I just mentioned, we've deliberated this internally as well, is we request that this language under section seven be retained for the purposes of allowing flexibility, again, whereas a developer may, again, with the, under the jurisdiction of the planning board, the approval of the planning board, opt to pay instead of provide the units. Recommendation number six, that section nine, that we retain the preservation of affordability in perpetuity, meaning for life, instead of fifty, instead of fifty years. Originally, this was a, the planning board recommendation was to, the original draft ordinance that was created by staff, we asked that the preservation of affordable units be in perpetuity for life. And planning board recommended to change that to fifty years. And after further review since the planning board recommendation, once again, we do recommend that perpetuity be the standard. Many communities that we know of that have adopted inclusionary zoning retain the affordable units perpetuity because once when you lose them, they're gone. And this is a case in point. Last year, our subsidized housing inventory, which I've included the most current one, it's the very last handout in the packet. Looks just like this, it's kind of like an Excel spreadsheet. The easiest thing is if you just turn it around to the back, percentage of subsidized, and by the way, this is the total number of subsidized housing units we have in the city. If you look in the back, a percent subsidized is what I look at very closely. And currently, as I said, we're at six point five percent. That is of a total based upon their census twenty-ten, year-round housing units, including market rate and affordable, we're at sixteen, six hundred and ninety-one. Of that, little over a thousand is affordable. You will see on that handout the affordability expirations associated with each development project. Some of these go back many, many years. What happened last year, actually the year prior, we're in seventeen now, in twenty fifteen, city lost a large number of units because the affordability expirations were set for twenty fifteen, for whatever reason. They were, at that time, they were placed on a fifteen-year affordability expiration. And unfortunately, again, if you don't keep up with the market rate units that are being created, and most recently, I would say that we're at about five hundred or so plus new market rate units being created. If we don't keep up on the affordability, the threshold keeps on, you know, that ten percent is, remains always a moving target. So ensuring perpetuity gives us the comfort of knowing that these units, these rental units will remain and will assist us in maintaining our ten percent. Something that I've neglected to mention too is another important reason of the ten percent threshold of meeting that, that all communities are required to meet, is if you're not at your ten percent and if you're not making what's called incremental progress each year, then you do run the risk of a forty B development coming into the community. And under forty B, an applicant could come in to the city, in this case, it's through the ZBA, and create a, an affordable, not affordable unit, but an affordable development, if you will. And because we are not at our ten percent threshold, we actually forego, or could forego, our ability to help shape the project, otherwise termed a friendly forty B. The applicant is well within their right, under the state law, within their jurisdiction, to go immediately to the state and seek constructive approval for a development without any input from the community. We've taken a step back on that, and one of the ways to safeguard us on that is the adoption of inclusionary zoning, but actually, prior to that was the creation of what this council and the mayor did, was a housing production plan two years ago. You see, in that housing production plan, if you're making incremental progress each year, it will, it will help stop a forty B development because the community is saying that we are making an earnest effort, that we are taking the need of affordable housing for our residents seriously, and therefore, we have that opportunity, that security, that comfort in knowing that there is a mechanism in place. Last two. Number seven, request that a new section be added to provide local preference. And local preference is one of those things that communities can adopt well within our jurisdiction under the state law. And I'm gonna read this here to you. To the maximum extent permitted by law, including the regulations of the Department of Housing and Community Development, that is the state authority, or any successor agency, any special permit granted hereunder shall include a condition that a preference for residents and employees of the city of Everett shall be included as part of the lottery and marketing plan for affordable units. Residency shall be established through certification of the city clerk based on the U.S. Census, voter registration, or other acceptable evidence. Finally, number eight, that a new section be included as well. And this is a recommendation from staff post-planning board approval. We actually, as we went through, and our housing consultant who was here tonight, and also our attorney from KMP, we noted that, we should definitely add this in here, that a configuration of affordable units, meaning studios, two bedrooms, et cetera, for a development project be calculated based on a ratio of total market rate units to be created. What does this mean? What this means is if, for example, if a developer is going to build a hundred units of market rate and the composition of the units, let's say, are, just to exaggerate here, twenty studios, thirty-one bedrooms, and fifty-three bedrooms, let's say, that that ten percent ratio has, that ten percent threshold has to be even. So simply put, a developer couldn't just come in and say, well, we're just gonna make our studios, for whatever reason, the affordable units and everything else because we can get more money. And as you see, the market rate for ones, particularly twos and threes are very attractive. And this, having this ratio in place ensures a balance, ensures a balance. So, Mr. President and the council, what I've read here to you are the eight recommendations that we have, and as I've stated, they are compiled from the planning board report that you also have from December sixth. I don't want to, I'm certainly happy to go over that as well, but it's a, basically consolidate the two into a, into the report you have dated January twenty-third, seventeen, with only in addition to this report from staff and planning board that, should the board wish to approve, that's section seven remain, as opposed to stated here, be removed. So with that, Mr. President, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Sousa, in regards to the low income, if a contractor comes in and they use federal money, do they have to abide by the rule where only Everett residents gets the low income? Because I know if they use federal money, it's whoever's waiting in line. So how do we make sure that the Everett residents are the ones that are gonna benefit by this law? By this change, I'm sorry.
Sure. The local preference is, what we've been advised, a local preference option, so that number seven is the best tool that we have to ensure that there is some preference for residents. Certainly, as we all know, we can't necessarily discriminate, right? We cannot discriminate. But the state has given some flexibility to have a local preference in place. And that local preference, and I'm gonna turn over to Attorney David Waterfall just in case if I get this wrong, but the local preference is approximately at thirty percent or so. And may, certainly welcome to come up to clarify.
Yeah, come here. Sit right here. Thank you. Yes, there are detailed regulations about the local preferences that can be allowed, and up to, of the affordable units, up to seventy percent of them could be set aside for local preferences. Up to seventy percent, yeah.
But you're saying preference, it doesn't mean it has to be.
That's correct.
I could be a contractor and you're telling me I would prefer Everett residents, but it doesn't mean I have to pick Everett residents.
Well, sure, if it's in the, if it's written into the ordinance that we're going to have, that the city would have a local preference, there are certain categories that can be preferred. And I believe the way it's written here is that local residents would be one of those categories.
Correct.
There are other categories that are permitted by law as well. As you can imagine, there are certain categories of people that would be unfair to give preferable treatment to, but the state, the state allows municipalities to give local preference to local residents, employees of local businesses, residents with children who are attending local schools, I believe, and employees of local businesses. I believe those are the four, the four categories that are permitted. So as long as those categories are the ones that are being, you know, given preference in the lottery system, because the lottery system is required under state regulation, then the ordinance would be compliant with the state regulations.
The other question I have is, how do they come up with a percentage of low-income housing? Like, in other words, where, is it based on the, how many people we have living? Population, I'm sorry, I was trying to come up with that word.
So the, the ten percent threshold, it's based on the number of total units being created in the city. So that's, that is, ten percent of the total units.
So in three and a half square miles, we have a lot of units, and it doesn't cover the low income? Is that what I'm assuming?
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't put us at the ten percent, unfortunately. Certainly, there's nothing wrong with market rate, but also, it's important that we have a good housing mix as well. And again, that's why.
No, I'm definitely not against this, I think this is a great idea. I just want to make sure it's for the Everett residents, so.
Your point's well taken, yeah.
So I have nothing against this at all, so let's get that straight. But I just want to make sure that the Everett residents are covered. And the other question I have is, you basically really don't have to be low income, we just want to be able, because a lot of the seniors are being out bought and they can't afford the rents, and I understand. I mean, someone could be making fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, but they can't afford a three thousand dollar rent. So that's understandable. So this would allow people even making money to afford to stay here. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's, as Catherine mentioned earlier, and that's one of the most interesting things too in this handout. On the lower left-hand corner, low-income households, you see renters and owners, and those are percentages of renters and owners that would qualify under the federal definition of affordable housing income limits. And therefore, in plain English, it's almost seventy percent of Everett residents, of our own residents, would potentially qualify for affordable. But then again, here we go, the housing stock isn't necessarily there. And therefore, the inclusionary zoning is that mechanism, one, to help support our Everett residents and to help create enough affordable, you know, we mentioned in here, affordable housing provides opportunities, and that's exactly it, opportunities to new and existing households to live in safe, decent, and affordable housing in safe, decent, affordable neighborhoods. And that's, that's what this is all about.
You don't believe that something like this would cause contractors not to come in and want to build? Do you think that would stop the growth in the city? Well, let me, let me make it clear, if I was building fifty units, okay? You would only expect one unit out of the fifty, or would you, would you expect five?
So it would be.
Ten.
It would, it would be.
Five.
It would be five.
Five.
So.
Ten percent of fifty units. 10 percent of 50 units, this, okay.
So, so there's also, obviously, but just to, to answer your question directly, and certainly, we're not new at this, as a state. Developers factor this in. You go to adjacent communities, you see it as well. And once again, if we were at our 10 percent, if we were beyond our 10 percent, I think conversation might be a little different. But in the same token, that's why we provide the density bonus. Some communities don't even provide that, within their zoning ordinance, but we try to, we try, we are giving flexibility to developers. And again, it's 10 units or more. So it goes beyond the family with, with two apartments above, you know, the triple deckers and so on.
So it goes on, 10 units or more, is that?
Correct.
Is that correct? So if I was building eight units, I wouldn't follow under this category?
You'd be under it, yes. We'd certainly welcome it, of course, but you'd be under it.
Right, but, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, to our guests, Mr. Souza. I'm looking at the last page with the, the housing units, and it's from the 2010 census. You've already alluded to the fact that we have had some developments. They're going to throw that number off a little bit.
Sure.
A couple I can think of is the Waters Ave development, the Bat Yod development. I know that there's a proposed development on the Parkway for wood waste.
Correct.
How many, how many units are at the Waters Ave development? Do you know?
Affordable units, zero.
Yeah, how many units in total are there?
Total, Waters Ave, 190.
190. Okay, so there's 19 more units that got to get absorbed by the market. The Bat Yod, how many units are over there in total?
Off the top of my head, more or less, I'm going to say about 340.
340. And I know that the, the last I heard, the proposed Parkway development over by Wood Waste, I think they were looking for, was it 450 or 500? What was the units they were looking for over there?
There's, there's actually, there's two on the Parkway. The, the housing development at the Harley-Davidson site.
Yep, that's another Bat Yod.
Is approximately, I want to say 240, 250.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's one that's actually currently before the planning board tonight, that is at the site of Wood Waste, and that's over 500 units.
Yeah. So all of those are going to be exempt because we don't have this in place?
Yes.
Okay. So when you add those up, you've got 750, 8, 9,000, 1,200. You add 1,200 more, you're up around 18,000, plus whatever individual growth has occurred between the census year of 2010 to present.
Correct.
You're probably in a, in a current position that's well below 6 percent at this particular point in time.
Correct.
So I think with that, I think we need to be a little bit more aggressive, and that causes me the concern with the first recommendation in Section 2 about increasing the threshold from six units to 10. I understand it's a balancing act, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a good thing that we're trying to do here. And I know it's something that we talked about, it's something that I've talked about with your predecessor years ago. So it's something we really need to get in step with, and I'm glad that we're getting there. But I look at, I look at that section, and I see that we're talking about a net increase of six units. So whatever your current structure is, one, one family, two family, three family, if you're adding six, that's where we're at. But the planning board, I guess, was recommending if it increases by a net of 10. And I think, given the fact that we're trying to make, make up some, some lost ground, plus we have to be concerned about stuff that's going forward, I was looking at that, and I was wondering why we weren't actually amending that section and saying a net increase of six, or something that would establish a total of eight units or more, rather than just pushing everything to 10. I, I think we need to be a little bit more concerned about it, because I think that we're behind the eight ball. And to your point about the good faith efforts, absolutely. And I think that the council and the executive office understands the, the need for this. So that's one of the things that I was concerned about. I'd, I'd like to actually see that not go to 10, but I'd actually like to put that caveat in there, that if, in addition to a net increase of six, if whatever you end up doing for construction ends up with units of eight or more, right there, you need 10 percent. With regards to recommendation number three with Section 4.1, you're talking about units of 50 or more requiring a 20 percent affordability.
Correct.
I think that, I understand the scales of economy, you know, obviously, a developer's going to want to maximize their profit. We don't want to do anything that's going to chill the growth of the city. But at the same time, if you're going to have such a large development come into a community, I, I think they need to really shoulder some of the burden of what they're creating into the market. So I would be recommending that it stay at 20 percent affordability instead of 10. And then with regards to, let's see, number five, recommendation number five, Section 7, talking about the, the Affordable Housing Trust, the credit. Do we even have anything like that in existence? Do we have an Affordable Housing Trust in existence?
We do not, but we are working with, with Catherine here and others. We are in the process of, of creating an Affordable Housing Trust. It's, it's also one of the recommendations of our housing production plan, but we don't have one right this moment.
So if we keep that option in, and we don't have one, I mean, we're kind of putting the cotton, you know, the cotton in front of the horse, or? I understand that it's something that would be good to have, but then the bigger question is down the road, if we do establish this trust, what's the function, what's the purpose?
Sure.
Funds are going to be held aside in that trust? Is it the city now that's going to be the developer, creating affordable housing with the funds from that trust?
Yes. The, in terms of the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that's, that's the intent, so that opportunity for, for the city to, to be able to create affordable, affordable housing. With respect to the, the actual creation of, of the, of the group, we, we are working on some language to create an ad hoc type of group in, in the interim. So if this gets approved, we would, we would not go absent without, but we would, we would have something in a relatively immediate committee or so to, to work on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the administration of it, I should say.
Okay. And then number seven, the section about the local preference, absolutely. You know, you want to have something in there if you can. The only thing is, I don't, I don't want us to have a false sense of security in terms of residency, and how quickly residency can get established. You know, you can maybe not technically be a resident of Everett, but it doesn't take too much to become a resident of Everett, and then thereby kind of stepping in front of people who have been here for a long time. But clearly, some language in there establishing some sort of preference for residents would absolutely be the way to go, because without it, then it's a free-for-all. So to the extent it's allowed under the law, you know, I would, I would absolutely recommend that we do that. And then the last question that I have for you is, with the handout, in the bottom left-hand side that you had referenced a couple times, we've got, it looks like about 39 percent of the owners of property in the city would fall within a low-income household range. But I would think that there's probably no benefit to them. I mean, it exists, it's a reality, and as much as our property values have been going up, which is wonderful, unless you're in the market to sell your home as a property owner, all it's have is your taxes are going out. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough balancing act for a property owner. You know, you don't want to gouge your tenants, you need to try to keep track and everything, but it's, it's, it's something that's very delicate. I know that, I know the administration had, had offered some money to offset the levy. It's been, it's been an issue that many of us in this council have been vocal about, and I think that we're in a position with Wynn and these other developments that are coming in to do even more than we have been doing. And I think we need to be doing more than we have to do. And when you look at this chart, and you see 40 percent of the homeowners are falling into a low income, I, I think it's very hard to ignore. And I don't think anyone's ignoring it. But I'm, all I'm saying is, I think it's something that we need to be a lot more sensitive to. It's a very serious issue for all of us. So with that, I, I appreciate the, the answers to the questions, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, my predecessor discussed almost everything I wanted to discuss also.
Great, my.
But that's okay. But I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions, or make a couple of comments on it. The, on, on page one of the passout, you have the affordable rental rates. And it bothers me that the affordable rate is less than the market rate. I, I don't, I don't understand that, and why that's like that, you know? And especially the four-bedroom one is like $31 over the market rate, and that's supposed to be the affordable rate, so I don't understand that. Maybe sometime you can, you can, I don't need, you have to do it now, but it should be corrected sometime.
Well, well, actually, and I didn't apologize to interrupt. Courtney here from Community Opportunities Group, we have talked about this, and she can further articulate, if you'd like, why exactly it's like that. It's actually, not necessarily a typo, but it's, it's interesting because it's taken into account the, the market situation where we are. But certainly, she is here, and she can further articulate that, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay, I'm just, I know we have another meeting that we have to stop, but yes, that'd be okay if she wants to come up.
At this time?
Sure.
Either way.
Courtney Starling, Community Opportunities Group, thank you. So what happens with the, when we are looking at the affordable rates, which are set by HUD, it's a fair market rate, they're done every year, it's based on, it's based on a number of things, but mostly median income. When I do a markets, when I do a market study, it's actually a snapshot in time to see, to look at what the rate is and what the gap is between what's going on in the market for, you know, if you're going to go out and rent an apartment tomorrow, what is it that is listed right now, and what might you expect to pay? The interesting thing with Everett is that you have two tiers of housing stock. You have housing stock that is rather old, and you have housing stock that is brand-new construction. And so what you don't see a lot of being constructed right now, certainly in other communities, but you don't see a huge number of studios coming online. Why the gap looks like, like, looks to be the size that it is, is because the housing that is largely captured, and that is actually older housing. The same for four-bedroom units, and certainly three-bedroom units at all, as well as virtually nobody builds new construction, three- and four-bedroom units, particularly in multifamily housing. There's a lot of reasons for that, I won't editorialize. But what you're seeing there, and when you look at the gap, is actually some of the differences between where there is new construction influencing the market, and where there is no supply of new construction. And so the older, so when you look at the market rate on a four-bedroom at $2,300, what you're largely looking at is market rate for older construction. Heating systems, electrical systems, plumbing, things of that nature may not have been updated, so you may have $2,300 in rent, but you also probably have a $600 a month gas bill for heat. So there's, so you, it's like anything else, but, you know, if you have a renovated unit or new construction, you'll see a higher value. And in Everett, you have a pretty distinct range, and, you know, even a two-bedroom unit, I saw things as low as, you know, $1,200 a month in rent to $3,000 a month in rent for a two. So that accounts for a little bit of the fluctuation, just because you have a two-tier, you know, market.
Okay. Thank you. And if I, okay, Mr. Chairman, continue. Okay, the other thing I had was the, I'm looking at your Section 2, to strike from six to 10 units. And if, if we were to do that, what would be the need of Section 4.1C, which says we should, that should be 10 percent also? I mean, would Section 2 not be gone?
Forgive me. The section you referenced, Section 4.1C?
Yeah. Shall be 20 percent, and you'll say, leave it, leave it at 50 percent? I mean, leave it at 10, is that?
Counselor, that was actually a really good catch here. The, originally, we proposed it to, that the requirement be at 20 percent for any development resulting creation of 50 or more dwelling units. And in this ordinance, the draft you received, that particular section, as the intent was, prior to Counselor Capone's further amendment, which sounds similar to this, was, that actually should have been struck out of.
Well, you guys ought to fix that.
So we will fix that.
Pay attention.
We will fix that. We will fix that.
The other thing that both councils talked on was Section 7, and the new Section 7. And I'm concerned with the residency shall be established through certification of the city clerk based on census, voter registration, or other acceptable evidence. And those, I really don't like to see those two words in there, because except, as we said before, acceptable evidence could be, we sharpen the dollar store on the square, or we go to the Cheeky Garden down, I mean, whatever it is down there. We go to, we eat down there. So I would rather, and you know, that puts it on to the city clerk to come up with whatever is acceptable evidence. And I think that should be listed. And if anything, you should say, if there anything else comes along, we would come back, we would try to change it to, you know, make that acceptable to the, this, this ordinance. So I would like to see that, that out, because it makes it too much of a thing to say, well, like someone said, "We just moved in here yesterday," or something. And that's, that's not right to do, you know, but we have to do something with that.
Your point's well taken, and we can, we can make that amendment easily.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set, thank you.
Counselor DeSola, please keep the time in mind, this is another counselor.
I just have one question. I think it was answered by Counselor Capone. Subsidized housing, does that include affordable housing also?
Yes.
No, I think you might have answered that earlier.
Yes.
I was just curious about that.
You are correct, yes.
Now, this is going forward.
Correct.
On whatever's being built now, after this is passed, then comes into effect, correct?
Correct, because there are protections under, under state zoning and local zoning that essentially, new developments that are already in the queue, meaning with, you know, with, through the city clerk, CBA, planning board, and so on, would be, would be exempt.
So it's just a sin.
So it would be a new construction.
It is a sin from 2015 to now. We missed out a lot, opportunity to get people into these units.
You're absolutely correct, and certainly prior as well. This is something that's been afforded to, to communities to, to adopt for many, many years. And what we've been able to capture is, in some respects, through the luck of the, of the process of including, either, as you see, some of them are actually through state agencies, some of these subsidized units through state programs, but certainly, as we know, federal and state programs, those things change, those things get adopted, those things get modified. And therefore, the ability to capture affordable can sometimes be a challenge. This gives us a mechanism, again, to help capture that.
Just one quick question. How will this long, how long will it take to be in effect, once it's passed, when you come up with the, you know, program, yeah?
Well, once when it is.
There's a lot of units being built as, as we speak.
Sure, sure. Once when it's passed, it, it would apply for, for new applicants, so for, for new developers that, that would come in the, in the queue. In terms of implementation, certainly, once when this is passed and becomes part of, of the city zoning ordinance, certainly through mayor's office, my office, and also Director Jim Soper's office, we will be ready to, to, to go on this. And as I mentioned earlier, about the, the ad hoc group for the Housing Trust Fund as well, but once again, it's interesting, working with this stuff in the past, you, you kind of see the, the, the upcoming projects, if you will. And we see it within our own communities, so there's, there's good lead time here.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Polatano.
Thank you. Through the chair. Yeah, most questions I have have been asked, and I appreciate, and I thank you. This, I think it's a great idea. I mean, since I first got involved in politics, I always said the problem with development is that we're pricing out the very people that we're doing the development for. And that this is, this is, this is being addressed, and I, I think this is great. I do want to go back to a little bit on the local preference, because you had read something earlier regarding federal guidelines. Could you read that again? You mentioned something about including people that work in the community as opposed to own currently. Could you just elaborate a little deeper on that?
Sure. And I will also defer to Attorney Waterfall as well, but with respect to the, the local preference pertains not only to residents, but also to, to municipal employees, and so. But if I may.
Please.
Attorney Waterfall.
Sure. Did you have a specific question about the, the categories of people that would be allowed to participate in the, in the lottery system?
No, not at all. It's just that my colleague had mentioned the fact that he had to see things, other acceptable evidence removed, but I thought that what you had read, what was read about the federal actually addressed that. So, you know, what would constitute a local preference on the federal level? I'm assuming what was read was on, from the federal level.
These are actually state regulations.
Okay, well, then, if you could elaborate that a little bit.
So these are, are guidelines from DCHD, DHCD, rather, and there are. are, it allows for local preferences, it allows for, for categories if the municipality wishes, which would be current residents, municipal employees, employees of local businesses, and households with children attending.
Not to cut you off, I apologize, if some of the councils can't hear you, if you can speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. I'm not used to speaking into microphones.
Sorry.
The allowable categories for the local preferences would be current residents, employees of local businesses, municipal employees, and households with children attending the locality schools. So that would include, for example, Medco students. It's pursuant to state regulation, it's done through a lottery system, and there are very detailed regulations about how that works. But if, for example, a project required 10 affordable units, under the state regulations, 70 percent of them could be doled out through the local preferences. So, in other words, if there were a total of 10 affordable units generated by the project, the municipality could, at maximum, award seven of those 10, 70 percent of the affordable units to the, through the lottery system, to the local preference categories.
Okay. And it sounds to me, based on the four categories you got, that seems to be fairly easy to confirm. If you're working in the city of Everett, you have a check stub identifying, you know, and you can even ask to go back two months' worth if you needed to. You know, municipal employees, self-explanatory, residents, again, easy enough to check, go to registration. So it sounds like there's already, you know.
A fairly robust qualification process to enter and award lottery, whether it's for ownership or for rental, but you can expect at least three months' worth of income statements. It's definitely, income definitely, most of it's variety, it's April, it's as required, the payment statements, credit card statements, anything that has income generation, whether you have an IRA, or anything along those lines as well. So that's a pre-application process prior to, and for the lottery.
Okay.
I would note, however, as it relates to the, the local resident category, that, that's interpreted pretty broadly, and there's actually a resident, a regulation that says that the municipality isn't really allowed to consider how long an applicant has lived or worked in the, in the municipality. So example, one municipality couldn't say that we're doing a, a local preference for people who have lived here five or more years. It would be, it would have to be open to all residents at the, at the time of application.
Okay. And the only other question I have is, what is, is there any, any room in here, or anything for, for veterans?
That, that is not one of the, the preference categories as, as we interpret the, the state guidelines.
Okay, so they would have to qualify under the, under the local preference, as opposed to having any other addition?
There's a separate program with the state for veterans, that it's similar, but also like.
Disabilities as well.
And there's a command housing handle.
But also, they could apply for a, even if they didn't qualify for a local preference, they could apply for the remainder of the affordable units.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Counselor McGawlin, please be brief, as we have to start our next meeting very soon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Souza last week, but I do have a couple of brief questions or comments. Tony, you have a development of more than 10 units, 10 percent of them are low income. Who's making up the difference in cost versus who's paying at what ratio, right? So, you're, you're doing a development, and 90 percent of it is, is at X ratio, 10 percent is low income. Who's making up the difference on the funding for, for the developer, or the owner of the, of the project?
Well, basically, the, the developer would be responsible. Sometimes there are mechanisms through state programs that can assist developers with certain credits and so on, but in essence, it's part of the, the, the cost of, of developing. And that's why we've included, it's important, that's why we included the density bonus in there, to allow the developers to give them some flexibility, in the same token, so we don't lose track of our affordable requirements. Because again, market rate is, there's nothing wrong with market rate, but we also need to look at a balance of our housing stock.
Sure, and I do, I agree with you. Tony, one problem that I see with this is, we have this in place, which is great. Somebody moves into the city in less than six months, puts their name into a lottery and gets picked. Person that's lived here for 20 years is left out, the person that moved in here six months ago is the lucky one that gets picked through a lottery, and is now an affordable housing unit. So it doesn't really help the, the, you know, generational resident of Everett in this case. I just see this being a, a way of people from the outside benefiting from our low income or affordable housing program. It's a direct way of people benefiting that we don't necessarily want benefiting, because we can't pick and choose who's going to move into these units. Is that a fair statement?
Well, the, again, the, the impact, low-income households, when we look at renters of Everett residents today that would qualify, it's almost 70 percent.
Yeah, we talked about that last week.
The lottery, yeah, absolutely correct, we talked about that last week. The, the lottery itself is, is a lottery, and there is a process, and it's, it's the way it, it works. Certainly today, we have zero. And this, this adoption of inclusionary zoning, it helps, it doesn't hurt.
Do, do we not think that linkage fee is sort of a better mechanism to get, so we're basically trying to get developers to get back to the city, that they're, they're coming into the city, they're sort of benefiting out of our, off our community, and they're leaving, leaving town, going on to their, to the next development, to the next project?
Sure.
And I know linkage fee has been before this council many times in the years past. Is linkage fee not a better option than this mechanism, in your opinion?
Well, linkage fee is one option, but the best option is to, is to create the, again, that mechanism for developers, because, you know, let's be honest, it takes government a while to, to do this stuff. And where developers are, are builders, that's what they do, and having the requirement of inclusionary zoning is, is very beneficial. Linkage fee doesn't necessarily hurt, but also linkage fee could be used for, potentially, potentially for, for other purposes as well.
Not likely, though, honest.
I will add, just to add, every other city that has linkage in that situation also has inclusionary zoning now.
So they have, so they have both in, in place?
They have both.
Okay, no, that's good to know as well.
That might give you perspective, everybody's dipping with both hands.
No, that's great. Thank you, I yield to the floor to my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DeFloria.
Is this something that's imperative, that needs to be voted on tonight? I really need some time to think about this. So I, I don't know how we would recommend either laying it on the table, or send it to a committee meeting, but as of right now, I can't make a decision, I need to do a little more research. So is this going to interfere with anything that we're doing? I mean, obviously, we've already had all these buildings that were already built. I think we're a little too late with this, that's my opinion. But is there something that would hold something up if we don't vote on this tonight? Can this wait for us to, for us to vote on it, is my question?
I mean, certainly, Counselor, I'm, if you're requesting additional time, you know, we'll, we'll certainly be, be here, and certainly, I'm, I'm happy to follow up with you. I know we've talked about in the past, any questions you may have, we're, we're all happy to, to assist.
I know you're always available, Mr. Souza, but if something gets thrown in you, and sometimes you just need time to absorb it.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, this is, I need time to absorb this right now.
Absolutely, I, I can completely understand.
Okay, thank you. So my recommendation is that.
If, if there's, if there's no other questions, excuse the customer, thanks.
Excuse, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's your pleasure, Counselors?
Well, I'll have, Mr.
Mr. President, I would refer it out without recommendation to the council, and then, when it's on our agenda, we could lay it on the table at that point in time.
Okay, is that a motion?
No.
Motion made and seconded to refer out to the council, and at that time, send it to the proper place. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have it? Is there a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the ayes have it, meeting's adjourned.[1776.11]